Okay, okay folks. Let's go ahead and get the city council meeting underway. City Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
All right, welcome to Monday evening, June 26, city council meeting. We have everyone in attendance. In terms of mayor public announcements, just a couple things that I want to get out there. One is a big, 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 huge thanks to all of the city employees that helped clean up Evanston after that storm that we had last night. I'll tell you, as mayor and as a -- really, let's hear it for our city employees. As mayor and as elected officials up here, you get lots of emails, there's lots of passion, as we know, in this community. And, you know, oftentimes it's, hey, you know, these are ways to make the community better. I can tell you, after that storm, the number of emails that we received unsolicited that spoke so highly of our city employees and our Parks and Forestry Department and our police and our fire department was truly impressive and speaks volumes about the city that we live in. Second thing is the civilian complaint board that the council has approved. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that. That is going to be out publicly on Wednesday this week, June 28, and we are going to give an entire month, 30 days, for people to respond and apply to be on that board, so that end date will be July 28. And we are going to highly promote that through the city's newsletter, as well as go directly to the organizations identified by that Framers Workers Group. Okay, so that will be out Wednesday this week publicly on the city website. Lastly, we are blessed in this community every year to have a truly extraordinary person come here and spend a year in Evanston as the leader and the president of Rotary International. I mean, we're blessed to have Rotary International headquartered right here, and this person is chosen from all of their membership to come here and be the president. And this evening, we are going to give the key to the city to that president who is leaving shortly that post, and we will be receiving a new president. So, I am pleased to present a key to the city of Evanston to John Germ for his service as Rotary International president for 2016 and 2017 year. In addition to his work with Rotary International, where its members have taken action on world issues such as disease prevention, access to clean water, and literacy, Mr. Germ is Board Chair and Chief Executive of Campbell and Associates Incorporated Consulting Engineers. He served for four years in the United States Air Force and has received numerous awards, including being recognized by the White House in 2013 as a champion of change. He began his connection with Rotary as a member in 1976, but has since served Rotary as a Vice President, Director, Foundation Trustee, and Vice Chair, Chair of Rotary's United States $200 Million Challenge, and Rotary International's President's aide. He and his wife Judy are also members and benefactors of the Arch Klumpf Society of the Rotary Foundation. Before I present the key, I would like to finish with one of his quotes about Rotary, about the Rotary theme he chose for this year's Rotary Serving Humanity. Quote, "Now is the time to capitalize on our success as we complete the eradication of polio and catapult Rotary forward to be an even greater force for good in the world." Mr. Germ, thank you for reminding us all to look out for the good in the world. It is now my pleasure to present you with the key to the city of Evanston. Please step up. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know where I was at last night, I missed the storm. It didn't come to our neighborhood, but let me sincerely thank you, and thank you on behalf of Rotary for the partnership that we have with the city of Evanston, and we know your city manager's a member of the Rotary Club of Evanston, and we invite all of the rest of you to become members of the Rotary Clubs, because serving humanity is what you're doing, and that's what we're doing, so it's my honor to accept this on behalf of all Rotary. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last announcement I'd like to make is this month is Parks and Recreation Month here in Evanston, so you'll see some further announcements about that coming out in city publications. Next up, we have city manager public announcements.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Lawrence Hemingway, our Director of Parks and Recreation Community Services is here. Lawrence, you wanted to say a couple more words about what we're up to this summer, and also, I think, to show a video that we have made recently.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Recreation. Today, I am excited. July, the month of July is nationally recognized as Parks and Recreation Month, and I want to share just some of the activities that we're doing here for staff as well as the community. So, I've got a quick couple slides just to show you. The slides, let's do the slides first, don't do that last. So, this year's theme for Parks and Rec nationally is Get Your Play On, and so I want to share with you how we plan to do that here in Evanston. So, here are the activities listed for the community. Real quick, July 8, we're going to do a fishing derby up in Lovelace. We have currently the production of Sweet is going on at the Noyes, over at the Noyes Arts Center. On Saturdays at 7:00 PM and Sundays at 3:00 PM, we're asking the community to come out and support that play. If you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. It is a phenomenal production. You have that two phenomenal local actors and actresses that tell a wonderful emotional story. And Sweet is a beautiful, beautiful play. I was not familiar with it, but once I saw it, I couldn't stop talking about it. So, please come out if you have a chance. Also, the weekend of July 15 and 16, you guys know, we kind of, last year, came to you and talked about our existing festivals and how they were structured. Well, I'm happy to reintroduce the World Arts and Music Festival, formerly known as the Ethnic Arts Festival. So, we've done some special things and changed things up, so please come on out and support us. The weekend of July 15 and 16, we're doing a pollinator event over at the Ecology Center on July 29, and then we have our weekly concerts that are going on throughout our parks, throughout each of the wards. And then we have a few fun activities listed for staff. Next slide. So, we're going to play kickball. If you remember, last year, it was one of the most exciting things that we did at lunchtime. We're going to play kickball with the staff. Alderman, we're asking you, if you're available, to come out and join us. We had a great time last year. We've added flag football. For those who don't know, that's my background, I'm a football, former college football player, and so we're going to add flag football to this year's event. We're going to get on the ice and play broom ball over at Robert Crown. We're going to make up some, do some arts and cultural things, make a collage over at the, here at the Civic Center. We're going to play some games here at the Civic Center, and then we're going to ask staff to go out and canoe. Most of the staff ideas and suggestions are surrounded around our lunch hour, so that staff can have a chance to come out and relax during the lunch. These are the activities that we plan to do to celebrate Parks and Rec Month. My last announcement is, for those who are not aware, city of Evanston Parks and Recreation Department has been recognized as a gold medal finalist. And as a gold medal finalist, for those who don't know, it is the Academy Award of Parks and Rec, quoting the city manager. It's the highest honor in our profession. Very prestigious. We are one of four cities in a Class III category, and so we're really excited. One of our final activities we had to do to, as a requirement, was to make a video. And so, we had, the video had to be posted on our city website by June 5, and we're proud to share that video with you today. It's part of the final judging, and we'll find out if we are selected this coming fall. So, at this point, I want to share with you the video.
The city of Evanston is dedicated to creating the most livable city in America. Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department play a critical role in creating opportunities to improve the overall quality of life for our residents.
Here in the city of Evanston, we motto our recreation programming after the three pillars of the NRPA: social equity, health and wellness, and conservation.
We are committed to ensuring that all our community members have access to the benefits of their local parks and recreation. Each year, we assist our low-income families by granting them scholarships and free beach tokens to ensure they are able to enjoy our programs and our beautiful lakefront. Our special recreation division provides after-school and summer camp programs for children with severe disabilities, enabling them to enjoy all the activities we have to offer. We provide access to several transportation options to prevent the isolation of seniors and individuals with disabilities. And we celebrate our diverse community through events for Black History Month, Women's History Month, Older American Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and our wonderful World Arts and Music Festival down by our beautiful lakefront.
Under our community engagement efforts, the city of Evanston did a feasibility study a few years ago, and it was determined that we had to build a new Robert Crown Community Center. Now, under that community center, we have engaged our volunteers and our community that had led the efforts and supported the city in hiring an architect and fundraising that has helped raise over $8 million to date. We are really excited about the next step, which is the final architectural drawings, in which our entire community has been a part of. Once our new community center is open, we are going to have a state-of-the-art community center that will service all residents of the city of Evanston. Under health and wellness, we have several initiatives. Our summer reading program is a partnership between the Parks and Recreation Department and the Evanston Public Library, where we provide 20 minutes of reading every day for our participants.
Here in Evanston, we have the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program, which is a nine-week entry-level work experience, in real-world experience, for our youth here in Evanston between the ages of 14 and 18. It's a really wonderful program. We do a great job of employing kids throughout the city, and this year, our goal is to employ at least 700 youth this summer, and we are well on our way to doing that.
There are several healthy food initiatives as well. We have community gardens, meals for seniors, we have our farmer's market, and we provide free breakfast and lunch for qualified participants. Along with these programs, we have a ton of fitness programs to address all ages and all participants here in Evanston. For staff engagement, our department has started a journey in which we identify the best staff available to get the job done. Professional development is encouraged, and each and every one of us has started taking individual diversity and equity training to ensure that we are providing programs for all citizens in Evanston. For conservation, we have several programs that are used to educate people in protecting open spaces and access to nature.
Solar panels were installed on the Evanston Ecology Center as a demonstration for sustainable energy collection and use. So, the Evanston Environmental Association is a nonprofit group that helps support the Ecology Center and our programs. They produce a variety of fundraisers and other educational opportunities that we use here to help fund some of our special projects, sim like the apiary.
The Ecology Center recently installed an apiary with four hives of bees. We will use the beehives to teach people about the importance of pollinators in the ecosystem, as well as teach about native bees and how they impact the ecosystem.
City of Evanston, creating the most livable city in America.
That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And then lastly, Enid Sanchez, our local government management fellow, is here to give a brief update on our community ambassador program.
Good evening, members of city council, Mayor Hagerty, city clerk Wright, and city manager Bupquist. My name is Enid Sanchez, and I'm the ICMA Fellow, and I'm here to talk to you about the community ambassador program. This program was started about two years ago by a previous fellow, and for the past few months, we've been meeting with community members to revamp the program. The group redefined the vision and the mission of the program, which is now to engage with residents, businesses, and visitors, sharing information about city services, program, and initiatives in the community. To participate in this program, you need to be 18 years or older. You also need to commit for two years, and you need to attend the training sections. And the application process will involve going on the website and filing out an application online, and then we're going to do some background checks, and there are going to be interviews. So, if you want to learn more about this program, go on the website, and I just wanted to thank our group of, working group, which one of our members is here, Paul, thank you, and all the other ones. Thank you.
Enid, maybe you could just talk a little bit about what they do, the community ambassadors?
So, Paul, you want to go?
Well, the elevator pitch was right there, where our purpose is to engage both residents, businesses, and visitors to the community, share with them what makes Evanston unique and the most livable city in the country.
And so, you go to special events and...
Yeah, that's our plan, is to be out at all of the community events, the Custer Street Fair at the city, at the music festivals, and be visible with the T-shirts that we have. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that we kind of envision ourselves as 3-1-1 in person, if you will. We don't necessarily have all the answers at our fingertips, but it's a great way to, if there's an opportunity, to answer a question that we don't have the immediate answer to, to follow up with that resident, that business, or visitor.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Enid. Unless there's other questions, that concludes my announcements.
Great, thank you, city manager. Clerk Devon Reed. Do you have any announcements, Clerk Reed?
No announcements, but I will say that if the ambassadors program could use any support from the clerk's office, I'd be happy to join you guys, especially because Enid makes me not the youngest person in the building. So, thank you, guys.
Do you have a budget?
No, but maybe next year, we can discuss that.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, next up on our agenda is public comment. Again, the wonderful thing about Evanston, there's a lot of engagement, there's a lot of people that we have signed up for public comment. We have 43 people signed up. The rules that the city council has set for public comment is we have a total of 45 minutes, okay, for public comments. So, what that means is that tonight, each individual that comes up for public comment will get one minute, okay? But hey, one minute is better than 30 seconds, so that is good, that is good news. What I would ask is that everyone, you know, be respectful of everyone else that is following you. I will give you a reminder at 50 seconds to get out your most important points, so the council hears it. If you hear a speaker that comes up before you and they've said the same thing that you're going to say, it is okay if you say, hey, I'm going to pass, I don't need to come up. I just definitely want to make sure that all of the different viewpoints are shared that folks have. We have a variety of topics on the agenda tonight, and I see a variety of speakers that want to get up and talk about different topics. So, again, we'll have one minute, and I will let you know at 50 seconds that you have 10 more seconds. All right, we did this last week when we had a bunch of speakers, and it went pretty well, and I expect we'll do equally well this evening. All right, so, the first speaker that was signed up was Casey Christensen. And if you wouldn't mind, when you come up just to announce your name, so the city clerk gets that and get the right pronunciation in case I mess it up.
You did great.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Casey Christensen, and tonight, I'm representing the League of Women Voters of Evanston. My comments tonight are in support of ordinance 49-0-17, which would ban the use of coal tar sealants in Evanston. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which I've newly learned about, PHs, which are present in coal tar sealant, are of concern because of their harmful impact on humans and the environment. I'd like to give a simple example of choice regarding PHs. Both bacon and some shampoos contain them. I can choose an individual to use these products, but if my neighbor uses coal tar sealant on their driveway, then the exposure affects the environment and is out of my control.
So, we're up on our, we've got 10 seconds left.
Okay.
Key point you want the council to remember.
Got it. The effects of PHs on the environment are real. As the city, Evanston has been commended for its environmental stewardship. As the city council, you have tonight an opportunity to continue this protection by voting to ban coal tar sealant. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And because of the time situation that we're in, if people have written statements, you are free to share those with the clerk. If you have a written statement, you can share it with him directly, or if you have a electronic, you could email it to him. And do you want to share the email address, just so people know?
You can use my city email address, and that's D-R-E-I-D@cityovevanston.org.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, the second speaker, I'm not going to do as well on the last name as I did on the first speaker. Keith, Keith K., why don't you come on, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Keith Kamiecheck, and I stand before you this morning, or this evening, asking you to do one of two things. One is to vote no to ordinance 46-0-17, amending City Code Section 9-5-15, regulating small unmanned aircraft in the city of Evanston. As written, this ordinance is overly broad and does exactly opposite of its intention. Further, the ordinance, as written, opens the city of Evanston to be challenged in federal court based on the fact that federal law preempts state and local laws, and that the FAA, not the local government, is the one that regulates airspace from the ground up. Number two, I would ask that you delay the vote. Currently, there is a case in federal court. It is Singer versus Newton, Massachusetts. Oral arguments were heard June 13, and a ruling is expected within the next 30 days. The outcome, if found in favor of Dr. Michael Singer, would set a precedent and, again, subject the city of Evanston to challenge in federal court.
Thank you, Keith. We've got one minute. You hit it right on the, right on the...
That works for me.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Julian Dietrich.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Julian Dietrich. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Evanston, and on behalf of the League, I ask council to pass the proposed ordinance restricting the use of coal tar sealants. An industry group has called into question research showing that chemical compounds in coal tar sealant are harmful to aquatic life and likely pose a risk to human health. We disagree. After reviewing the group's comments, the U.S. EPA stood by its conclusion that the compounds are of concern because of their harmful impacts on humans and the environment, and rejected the group's claim that the U.S. Geological Survey's research is biased. The coal tar industry long claimed that its product was safe, yet the failure to regulate tobacco had sad results for many people. We consider the evidence compelling enough for Evanston to join Will Matt, Winnetka, and Highland Park in enacting this ordinance. We urge you to act the same.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now, I'm going to announce the next three, so you know sort of the order, so we can keep this going quick, to help everybody here in the crowd. Next up, we're going to have Sarah Lovinger, then David, I'm not sure if it's Staub or Starb, and then Dick Peach. Okay, so those will be the next three, so we've got Sarah up now.
Mayor and council members, thank you. My name is Dr. Sarah Lovinger. I'm an internal medicine physician, and I'm the director of the Chicago Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, and I'm here to say that on behalf of Physicians for Social Responsibility, I support a ban on coal tar sealants. Basically, coal tar sealants are a threat to human health. In fact, the American Medical Association in 2016 called for a ban on coal tar sealants, particularly those that have high amounts of this, of this known toxin. Evanston has always been a public health and environment leader in the Chicago area. Let's join Will Matt, Winnetka, South Barrington, and do what's right for our citizens and ban coal tar sealants. Thanks.
Thank you, doctor. David, and then after David, we've got Dick Peach, and then David Campbell.
Hello, council members and mayor. I'm David Staub. I'm the president of the Central Street Neighbors Association, and I'm here to speak in favor of the council taking action on the recommendation of the special committee and the Parks and Recreation to approve the, to authorize the negotiation of an agreement with the Evanston Lighthouse Group. Our organization consistently, in fact, back when Citizen Stephen Hagerty was the chairman of the, of the original committee in 2015, we prepared a statement that urged, among nine points, that the property remain in the public domain, that it remain open space, that to preserve and rehabilitate the mansion, that we seek to attract visitors from other areas, that we maintain the public space within the mansion, and that we look for a public-private partnership to further the goals. And we think that the proposal from the Evanston Lighthouse Group, Lighthouse and Gardens Group, meets all these requirements, and we've been doing this for five years, and we think it's time to move on and not have this delay any further.
Thank you, David. All right. We've got Dick Peach up next. Now, I would ask, I know it's nice to cheer and boo and all that stuff, I would ask that we refrain from that in the council chambers, regardless of whether we feel good about what the speaker says or not so good about the speaker says. All right, I covered for you, Dick Peach, in case somebody doesn't like what you're about to say. Dick Peach.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, my name's Dick Peach. I'm president of the Evanston Environmental Association, and we're here tonight to voice, I don't know what it's opposition, but concern about the Harley Clark Mansion and the environmental programs they're proposing. We support the programs at the Ecology Center, and have since 1976. We promote environmental awareness to the surrounding communities, and we feel very strongly about this. The Ecology Center currently runs 17 different programs at the Lighthouse campus, serving over 1,000 Evanston residents between the ages of two and adulthood. They've been providing these classes since the early 80s, and these programs generate over $100,000 a year for the city. We think that the programs that are being proposed by the Harley Clark Group will be in direct competition to these, and very harmful to these programs and to the end results we're trying to achieve of environmental awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Okay. Next up, we've got David Campbell, and then on deck will be Madeline Jealous, Gellis? Again, sorry. When you get up here, please correctly pronounce your name, in case the mayor completely messes it up.
Hi, I'm David Campbell. Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. I am a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and was also a member of the the Parks and Recs Advisory Board and was also a member of the special committee that looked at the Harley-Clark. So if you go back to September 12th of last year, the city council passed a resolution to ask our group to come up with ideas for the use of the Harley-Clark. This was a very open process. It was a very rigorous process, and it came to the best conclusion to use the property. As a citizen that's involved, to now have kind of the council decide that it really didn't like our results, I think is, you know, it's, it's a little hurtful to us who spend our time for, you know, giving our time for the city. So I hope you will really support the recommendations of our board, of the special committee, and the, and pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, you guys, remember, you're not supposed to clap if you like or boo if you don't like. Let's, let's try to stick to the rules here in the chamber. All right, I know it's no fun. All right, let's go. Madeline.
Okay, I'm Madeline Gellis, a resident of Evanston and a past board member of Landmarks Illinois. I'm in favor of having the Harley-Clark mansion become the new home of the Evanston Lake House and Gardens. The Evanston Lake House and Gardens will breathe new life into a classic lakefront mansion that is an Evanston landmark and is also on the National Register of Historic Places. All of the residents of Evanston will be able to enjoy these gardens, take classes, and attend events. Our students from grammar school through high school will benefit from the action we take today. Years from now, when people will hear that Evanston was actually thinking of tearing down the Harley-Clark mansion, they will have the same reaction that people have when they hear that Chicago was thinking about tearing down the library that is now the Chicago Cultural Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. All right. They've given me a gavel up here. I guess I can use it if I need to, but really, let's please keep it to the rules of the chamber, okay? Because it's really not fair to people that do come up and, you know, say something, and maybe you disagree, and you're not doing anything. So I think it's only fair to the speakers. Dave Kanter is next, and then Jerry Hurst, and then Claire Talan, I can't read your last name, Claire, but that's the order, so Dave Kanter.
Good evening. I'm Dave Kanter. I'm an attorney. I represent the Pavement Coatings Technology Council, and I'm here to speak against the proposed ordinance on coal tar sealants. It's hard for me to do this in one minute. I can't. But there, really, at this point, there is no evidence that Evanston has a problem. You have no test results showing you have elevated levels of PAHs in any water source. Dr. Lovinger spoke about studies talking, linking coal tar sealants to adverse human health. There are none. I know I've sent you information, or I sent you information last week that I think is important and essential for you to consider in, in deciding this issue. What we'd like to have is a dialogue. PCTC would like to come and make a presentation to city council, to the environmental board, or any combination thereof, because this is an issue that's very important to us, obviously, and it's, it's not an issue that, that can be handled, handled in one minute at this, at this meeting.
And you nailed the time.
Please listen to both sides of the floor before you vote.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Jerry Hurst, next.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Hurst. I live at 325 Dodge Avenue, and I'm a member, a board member of Citizens Greener Evanston. I would urge you to support the ban recommended by the Environment Board and the Human Services Committee on the use of coal tar sealant. There's ample evidence from the scientific community that coal tar sealant is damaging to both human and aquatic life because it contains high concentrations of polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons and other related chemicals. Over time, abrasion causes small particles of this product to find their way into our homes and waterways. The city of Evanston government has responded responsibly to citizens' concerns about coal tar contamination in the drinking water lines around James Park. There's an ongoing process of replacing the water, the water pipes on Dodge and now Howard avenues. The city is also pursuing a suit against ComEd and Nycor in relation to this problem. Even though the chemical pollution found in this instance has been miniscule, and we're assured that our water is safe, the city is proceeding with this remediation. This is the responsible thing to do. We now have a chance to curtail the amount of chemical pollution produced by coal tar sealant from entering our homes and our water supply.
You got five more seconds, Jerry.
Why would we knowingly accept the risk of introducing more of this known carcinogen after we tore up our streets to replace our water lines to make sure that we're not exposing our citizens to this hazard? I urge you to vote in favor of the coal tar ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, Claire is up next, and then we've got Carl Klein after Claire, and then Bonnie McDonald.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Claire Talan Bruin. I'm excited about the possibility for the use of Harley-Clark for public environmental education. I run a Great Lakes education program in partnership with School District 65 called Pipes and Precipitation. All third and sixth grade students participate in this free program. I visit students at school for labs and investigations and meet them at the lake for a field trip. We test water, investigate the sand, collect litter, learn about marum grass, and tour the water treatment plant. With access to the Harley-Clark, this program could land and expand in so many ways: full field trips, full day, multi-day field trips, new labs, many more students, and the weather would cease to be an issue for the program. And I would offer to Mr. Peach that I believe that there's a lot of learning and teaching labs, a lot, a lot more. There's no limit to the amount of students and partnerships and activities that we could have all along the lakefront.
Thank you, Claire.
May I add a thing?
You got five more seconds if you want.
Nurture a watershed connection is also, is our low-hanging fruit in Evanston, and in a time of global freshwater peril is also our responsibility, and I'm also supporting the ban on coal tar sealants.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank, thank you. And really, I appreciate everybody really working with the one minute. I know it's tight, and everybody's doing a great job, so Carl.
Good evening. Let's not set the clock back on this issue by starting a new RFP process. Instead, let's consider that over the past nine months, Evanston Lake House and Gardens has worked with the Harley-Clark Planning Committee to shape the future of the Harley-Clark House and Jensen Gardens. They have created an inspirational, viable, and fantastic plan to make Harley-Clark, Lake House for all of us. This group has found identical models across the country where cities just like ours have saved historic mansions and left a lucrative, beloved gem for the city. Evanston Lake House and Gardens has developed an amazing lakehouse plan, including experimental learning, where students of all ages will learn about the environment, arts, and rich cultural history of Evanston. Harley-Clark and its Jensen Gardens is the kind of place which makes Evanston a special place. Reviving this house and its gardens will have significant benefits for our community. Please consider the resolution to move forward with Evanston Lake House and Gardens plan and instruct the city to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with this Evanston Lake House and Gardens. There is broad community support, and I'm going to end with this quote from John Ruskin, "The measure of a city's greatness is to be found in the quality of its public spaces, its parks, and squares." Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. All right, Bonnie McDonald, and then we have Janod, and then Peter Keenan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bonnie McDonald. I'm the president and CEO of Landmarks Illinois, which is a 46-year-old statewide historic preservation advocacy organization, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the recommendation that you have before you to enter into a negotiation with Evanston Lake House and Gardens. We listed this property in our 2016 Most Endangered Historic Places list to ensure that demolition did not go forward and to find something successful. So now is the time to move forward with this plan, which is based on sound reasoning and an excellent business plan. I want to say something unique, because you're going to hear from everybody tonight that we need to move forward with this. What I want to tell you tonight is I've brought 15 years of nonprofit executive director experience to evaluating the success of this nonprofit organization and how we, as a nonprofit, can help them succeed. And what I've found is their board has the skills and the experience to do this right, that they have a very good business plan, a solid business plan coming forward to you, and that I believe they have the fundraising expertise to make this happen as well.
Thank you, Bonnie. We're at a minute five. All right, great job. Thank you. All right, Janod Ryski, and then Peter Keenan, and then next up will be Anna Henry.
Mayor Hagerty, tonight you have displayed what I would call your true motivations, six to 12 months for a new RFP for Harley-Clark. Mayor Hagerty, your own children have their private beach to play on and a McMansion to eat lunch, and what about the rest of the children of this community? Why would you roadblock Harley-Clark as a public access for other children from the second, the fifth, the eighth, and the ninth boards? Why won't all council members demand increased access to recreational program for children from other, other areas of the city? It doesn't, and I can't go into everything because it's a long history, and I started this with Freedom of Information request when you had the so-called meetings, illegal meetings, by the way. Frankly, my own children attended the public schools here from K to eight. Mayor, I know your children don't, don't attend the schools, but maybe this would be an opportunity for your children to play with the other children of Evanston and learn something. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up, Peter Keenan.
Oh.
Oh, I had, oh, excuse, wait, Janod, and then I had Peter Keenan, but if you are Anna...
I am Anna.
All right, I'll let you go, and then we'll do you, Peter, okay?
My name's Anna Henry. I'm here to speak in support of the Evanston Lake House proposal. As an Evanston resident, I'm excited for all the opportunities this plan represents, and as a parent and an early childhood education professional, I'm excited for, well, sorry, I'm especially interested in the educational opportunities that the site offers. In particular, I believe it would be an amazing site for a nature preschool. It could offer the youngest members of our community the chance to experience a high-quality early childhood education, and at the same time, help lay a foundation for environmental literacy for the generations to come. The beach, the dunes, and the parkland offer such a unique location for children to explore and learn, and we have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to capture this space and preserve it for them, and that's why I support this mission.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Peter, for your flexibility.
You're welcome. I'm Peter Keenan, and I'm here to talk to you to support about the Harley-Clark mansion, excuse me. I'm just going to make two quick points, make it easy for everybody. Some people have been quoted in the paper saying that they think it's a bad investment to invest in the Harley-Clark mansion. So my question with that is, when was, when was the last time it was a bad time to invest in lakefront property? Okay? The second point I'd like to make is kind of frustration as a citizen. I want to support David Campbell. The last time I remember as passionate citizens coming forward with plans for making Evanston better was the library, I'll call it SPAT. It ended up very well. The citizens did a great job. We have a great citizenry here. We're well represented. I think you should very, consider that very much. I mean, it's been very successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. All right, next, next up, we have Michael Rafferty, and then we will have Rodney Green, and then Carlos Sutton.
Hello. My name is Michael Rafferty. Sorry, I had to come from the cheap seats back there.
It's my, it's my fault. I didn't give the lineup, Michael, not yours.
Anyway, I live at 724 Clinton Place, and I'm speaking in favor of the Harley-Clark project, as this is my backyard. My children play there all the time. It's a great natural resource, as the previous gentleman said. When has this ever been a bad investment? I also get that solving this problem is not easy. If it was, you wouldn't see all these people here. You wouldn't have all these proposals. It wouldn't take months and decades to solve it. I get that. But I'm saying, look at this as an opportunity. Visitors that come are astounded that this natural, this resource on such a beautiful natural setting is in the condition it is. Today, at the best, it's an embarrassment, and at the worst, it's a monument to the failure of government and a safety hazard. I challenge all of you to change the story of Harley-Clark on your watch. Make this a success. Make the symbol of Evanston not a crumbling decay of the past, but a monument to ecology and an investment in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Perfect timing, too. One minute. All right, Rodney Green.
My name is Rodney Green, and good evening, Mayor, city clerk, council members, and city manager. I'm in support of the lakefront, Lake House Gardens proposal, but on my second thing, I want to talk about the ordinance A7. I understand that the city clerk and the city manager are talking about making changes in the clerk's office, trying to align better services for passport and transfer tax. I'm trying to figure out, what are you trying to align when it's a competent person right there now who's doing an excellent job in transfer taxes and also passports? And you can only do passports if you're a passport agent. You have to go through the testing. You got to be certified. If you don't have a person doing that, then you cannot do passports in the, in the clerk's office. So my question is, what is, what is the reason for trying to realign what's already been a successful services in the clerk's office? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, next up, we've got Carlos Sutton, then Manuel Fioras, and then Kira Kelly and Janet Kirby, I think. Or maybe we have three people there in one minute. All right.
Good evening, Carlos Sutton, and I want to congratulate you, Mayor Hagerty, and your election council members, city clerk, and city manager. I stand here in this evening for support of moving forward with the Harley-Clark proposal. I also want to recommend that the new council members be aware that legislation and reforces have already been appropriate to support this project. Any changes will require a reversing of previous legislature. While you're considering our VP, remember recreation for people, not property for public exploitation. I also suggest that you look on your gear shifts when you leave this evening. Park is at the top, reverse is second. Let's go forward, not backwards. Thank you.
That's, that's worthy of a clap. All right, Manuel, and then we have Kira Kelly and her group, and then Wendy Pollak will be after that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Manuel Flores. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Varson &amp; Lair, and I'm here on behalf of Sigma Chi Foundation, Your Honor. We are respectfully requesting that the city council vote no on the private citizen petition to landmark a neighbor's property in the city of Evanston. Sigma Chi Foundation is a longtime Evanston organization, is very proud of its tradition, history, in developing leadership and service in young men, in young men that it represents. Your Honor, this matter here, we find that we are dealing with a structure, beautiful home, representative of the many homes that you see throughout Evanston. However, just because it's a beautiful home, and just because it was built by a popular architect and has some distinct features, that in of itself does not make it a landmark. We're very concerned that if the city council were to move forward with this proposal, that it would have the effect of watering down the very landmarking ordinance that we have that was intended to preserve truly landmarkable properties, and B, that it has an undue, impinges on the rights of Sigma Chi, a longtime civic organization here in Evanston.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
All right.
Since we're down to a minute, I hope we're going to...
Okay.
I believe the Lake, the Evanston Lake House plan is the best way to save this iconic Evanston building while costing the city little or no money. Their programming will be the best the community has collectively thought of. Every kid in District 65 will get a lakeside education about the Great Lakes, and socially and economically inclusive programming geared for all corners of the city. Every kid, every person in Evanston can go to an amazing lake house on our beloved Lake Michigan and enjoy the incredible area the way I enjoy it. Just think, it can open a door to kids. Can't you see something beautiful and aspirational, making a lifelong impression? As I've heard a lifelong family-focused volunteer say at one of these meetings, "You know who needs this? The underserved kids in our community. They need to see something like this. They need to be in something like this." Another, the testimonial from the District 65 third-grade teachers in the packet says, "So many of our students don't go to the lake. Their parents lack awareness or don't have the time. If this building was welcoming to them, it would increase their sense of connection to Evanston in general, the nature of Lake Michigan in specific. We would love to extend our field trip to the environmental education room."
We're at, we're at one minute, Kira.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. I thought it was a good way to end. I thought it was good. I interrupted. That was bad. Thank you.
We all came up to show that there's quite a few...
More than just, yes, it's very clear. Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Wendy.
Hi, I'm Wendy Pollak. I'm co-chair of the Environment Board. Just very quickly, I'm here to speak on behalf of the coal tar ban, and as you know, the Environment Board voted unanimously to recommend it, and we were, appreciated the unanimous, unanimous support of the Human Services Committee for this ban, too. We considered the evidence. You've already heard it summarized. It's abundant. It's persuasive. That's why other municipalities have already banned the substance. As a practical matter, I'll just say, we have a driveway that we're having resurfaced... As a practical matter, I'll just say, we have a driveway that we're having resurfaced this week. It's quite large, and the question of coltars never came up. Practically speaking, we don't need it, so I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next up, we have Rob Mark, then Jim Colross, and then Sheila Sullivan.
Hey, good evening. I'm Rob Mark. I'm a Evanston resident. I'm a commercial pilot, and I wanted to mention something about the drone ordinance that you're considering. As a pilot, I also happen to manage the drone education program up at Chicago Executive Airport, so we've been going around the same way you have for the last two and a half years. You've heard it a number of times tonight, don't fix what's not broken. This is really early yet. I would not consider creating an ordinance that you're gonna have, not to mention the feds come down on you probably. It's almost impossible to enforce. You'd be checking a box, saying, "We did something," but no one would be any safer because of that ordinance. Again, it's still early, there are lots of ways to protect a community and its residents from, you know, drones that may go amiss. We'd be happy to help at some point, if we can ever do that, but again, I wouldn't jump on this one yet. I'd give it a little more time. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. That was perfect. One minute to the flat. Jim Colross.
Hi, Mayor, council, City Manager, and City Clerk. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Jim Colross. I'm here representing all the folks who are trying to save 1726 Hinman. It is not as large as the Harley-Clark Mansion, but it is a very, very lovely structure. It is important to the history of Evanston. It was built by an architect who has dozens of national historic properties, Evanston landmark properties, cities of Chicago landmark properties, et cetera. We have full support of all of the neighbors. We have support of nonprofits, museums, and all sorts of other folks behind us, so I hope and encourage and respectfully request everybody to move forward with the Preservation Commission's unanimous resolution to landmark 1726 Hinman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. All right, next up, we have Sheila Sullivan, and then the next on deck will be Larry Lundry, again, I apologize, and then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Sullivan. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Southeast Evanston Association, S E A. We have supported the community use of Harley-Clark House and have been actively involved in this issue since 2013. We come again before you today to state that we support the findings and recommendations of the Harley-Clark Planning Committee that was chaired by Alderman Ravel. In 2016, the committee was directed to develop a plan for future operation of the Harley-Clark, and over the past year, they determined that the Evanston Lake House and Gardens Plan for restoring and repurposing the mansion would be the best use and serviced Evanston residents. This was a recommendation arrived at after a year of meetings with interested community groups, many representing environmental education, as well as interested citizens. S E A was at some of those meetings, and we saw that it was a very thorough and inclusive process, and as such, took a great deal of time and effort by the many people who served on the committee and contributed in various ways. They did their job, and they arrived at a sound solution.
Thank you, Sheila.
We just don't, we just don't see why we would delay this at this point and not move forward with negotiating a lease.
Terrific, thank you. All right, next up, we've got Larry Lundry, Mary Rosinski, and then Linda Damaschek.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Larry Lundey, but I wanted to, just wanted to talk in support of the Harley-Clark situation. As much as Oak Park is known as the home of Frank Lloyd Wright, it is equally fitting that Evanston should be known as the home of Daniel Burnham. The Harley-Clark Mansion would be an ideal home for the Daniel Burnham Study Center to celebrate his contributions to urban planning, architecture, and environmental awareness. Burnham chose to move to Evanston with his family in 1886. He's known globally for being the director of the 1893 World's Columbian Exposition, for his role in designing and implementing the McMillan Plan for the urban redesign of Washington, D.C. in 1909, the plan of Chicago, the design of Manila and the Philippines, and plan for Cleveland, as well as well-known buildings as the Rookery, the Fisher Building, and the Flydiard Building in New York City. In terms of being a destination city, Evanston would be very smart to recognize this renowned hometown architect and urban planner and bring awareness with the birthday celebration on September 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, Mary Rosinski.
Hi, my name is Mary Rosinski, and I'm not going to filibuster and reveal this, but I will tell you that this, these two books represent six years of working with this council and this city, and it represents the history of what's gone on here. We started out back in 2011, whether or not we were going to get rid of our buildings, but I won't go into all that detail. We did an RFP, we talked about it, everyone said no one came, then there was a not file, then there was a for-profit that was one to two and a half acres. We wasted a year going back and forth whether or not that was or wasn't going to happen. We did over 20 community meetings in this town between the city and Noel Park Sale. We've done two surveys, we've had three extensive property reports on it, we've had tons of delays, and the public has come out loud and clear every time that this building they want to see used as public space, either run by the city or run by a nonprofit. Evanston Lake House and Garden has come out with a wonderful program for both adults and children, for people of all ages and socioeconomic and races throughout this country. And any visionary city living on the lakefront with a coastal management ability would be embracing this.
Thank you.
So I ask you not to go back and start this process all over again with another RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Linda Damaschek, is Linda here? Was she here? Oh, sorry, sorry, Linda, geez, I gotta put my glasses on. And then we have Krista Grimm, and then Lou Harms.
Hi, Linda Damaschek. So much to say, not enough time. I want to let you know that Noel Park Sale supports the Evanston Lake House and Gardens Project because it is public community use, the Environmental Education is a wonderful resource for all the students in Evanston, and cultural tourism will bring increased economic benefits to Evanston. Principles of good government dictate a good faith process. That includes respecting the time and expertise of citizen input on the numerous committees. There's been two, well, three. It keeps this project moving forward and not turning back the clock to 2011, and starting all over again with for-profit entities and uses which threaten public access and use of this community treasure again. Almost six years have passed since this issue has been raised, plenty of time for other bidders to submit proposals. I would like to make sure that everyone understands that the current zoning is open space, and as such, any alternative uses would require spot zoning, which is not allowed. It's not good government, which I'm sure you will...
You're at one ten already, Linda. I need to wrap this up, I'm sorry.
As I said, so much more to say, but I'm sure that you will all adhere to principles of good government and that the vote tonight that you take will exhibit this integrity.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. All right, Lou Harms, and then we have Liz Luby, and then Robert Dar Apple. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss someone? Oh, Krista, I'm sorry, Krista.
Go ahead.
All right, Lou, you go, and then we'll do Krista. It's on me, again.
Okay. My name is Lou Harms. I've been a resident of Evanston for 90 years. Wow.
Congratulations.
I'm here to provide important information regarding the deliberations of the property known as the Harley-Clark Property. My belief is that more information is always a good thing. I would like to provide to the council a U.S. District Court document known as the Loyola Case, which is prevalent to any effort of the public government to dispose of what the court refers to as public resources. The Harley-Clark Property is, and for many years has been just that, a public resource benefiting all Evanston residents. I have brought and would like to tender this council the court-provided and the extensive review of what a public trust document is and what it means. In short, it states that neither the state nor any other government entity may divest ownership or power over any such public resource. In conclusion, I request that this copy of the U.S. District Court's decision be included in the minutes of this meeting, as well as carefully considered by the members during the deliberations, what to do with Harley-Clark Property.
Thank you, Lou. You can bring them up here and give those to the clerk. Yep, thank you. All right, now we're gonna go with Krista, and then we'll have Liz Luby.
Good evening. My name is Krista Grimm, and I am the president of the League of Women Voters, Lake Michigan Region. Since 2014, we have been educating the public about the dangers of coltar sealant as part of a larger stormwater runoff program. And nearly everyone is both shocked and concerned when they learn about the dangers of coltar sealant and the fact that they may have this product at their home. This demonstrates the need for a ban to protect the public health. There's been very little research about the effects of coltar sealant on the Great Lakes, but a 2014 University of Michigan study found that there are PAHs in the nearshore waters of Lake Michigan, and the researchers estimated that 16% of the substances came from coltar sealants, so it is a contributing product.
Ten more seconds.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'd like to finish by saying I thank you for being a good steward of our Great Lake and considering this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. All right, let's see, do we have Liz Luby? Yes. Then we'll get to you, Robert.
I don't have anything prepared, and I didn't do any homework on this, but I'm a 48-year resident of Evanston, and my Aunt Rosemary Payop, who sat on this council years ago, would be here absolutely pushing this forward. This town and that location of that property is at the end of this incredible lakeshore drive that goes all the way down to the south end of the city of Chicago. All these famous architects we just mentioned, all of them were aware of this. I don't know when that house was built, but it's the very last piece of property before the lakefront becomes private. We owe it to not only Evanston, but the city of Chicago, and these great planners to keep that property open for the public use, and it doesn't sound like we are entering into a lifetime agreement with whatever, that this first proposal is the thing that's gonna get it started, and then we Evanstonians will pick up the pieces and keep it going. I'm all in favor of this, and so would Rosemary Beak.
Thank you. Not yet. All right, Robert.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Robert Dalrimple. I'm a one-year resident of Evanston, and I'm speaking about the Evanston Lake House and Gardens proposal and the lease negotiations. I've been active in the educational aspects of the Lake House Gardens Group, and I strongly believe that education at the lake is very important. I think it's good for residents of Evanston. However, I worry about the business plan. I worry about the fact that what happens if in two years they don't get the five and a half million that's necessary to renovate the building? Therefore, I think the city has to get financially involved, and it may have to get involved in the beginning or sometime in the future. For example, if the five and a half million dollars is not enough to bring the building up to code, if it's not enough to make it attractive for people to use, or safe for students, and accessible to students to use, what happens then? What does the city do? The annual budget depends on several important pillars, such as fundraising, what happens if there are shortfalls in fundraising? Sometime between now and 20 years from now, does the city step in?
You've got five more seconds.
All right, and so I think also with businesses, we have a cafe proposed. Will there be more businesses proposed for the building if the cafe revenue is not enough? And so that's my concern.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up is Priscilla Giles, then Judith, again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's last names, Judith Mubryan, and then Betty Esther.
Good evening. My name is Priscilla Giles, and is a member and citizen of Evanston, speaking to this council for the first time. I would like to welcome the new and continuing members of City Council. I hope this council will listen and act on behalf of the citizens of the various communities in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith?
Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Judith McBrien. I direct the Archimedes Workshop, which produces films and books about architecture, history, and urban design, most notably a National PBS program, the first full-length documentary on the life and work of Daniel Burnham. I would like to support the preservation and use of the Harley-Clark House, and I would like to propose the creation of a Daniel Burnham Study Center, the Harley-Clark House, where students of all ages can learn about Burnham's ideas that integrate architecture, landscape design, engineering, and city planning. The Burnham Study Center is an opportunity to explore and broaden the educational outreach of the Harley-Clark House and serve as a destination to increase cultural tourism in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Terrific, thank you.
My name is Betty Esther, and I've been here in this building listening for the past six years about Harley-Clark, what it can do, what it can't do, who comes there, and have heard other people say things that I don't care to mention, but one thing I would like to share with you today, during all of those meetings, there was citizens resident. If you look at the chart on the city's website, it has resident, or voters as you call, then it goes down to the mayor, the city manager. We are at top. We elected you, you are hired to carry out our wishes. Our wishes have been expressed to you for six years, that we wish this to be a public space, run for education, and stay open, like all of the parks that is in this community. We should not fix up a park or have to do something and then want to throw it away. Six years ago, you spent CD beijing money. Now a park is threatened to be lost.
Thank you.
You should visit Gilbert Park.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the order, we've got Barbara Burns, Gretchen, and then Leela. I'm having trouble reading the last names on both of those. Do we have Barbara Burns? How about Gretchen Fathur? Fathur? I think she's coming from the back, and then I've got Leela Rhodes, Robes? Okay, and then next up will be Jean, I got Jean Lindwall on the list, and that'll finish off this sheet, and then I just have one more sheet after this, folks. All right, let's see, come on up to the speaker, we'll just keep it going, and the other person shows up, we'll slide them in.
I'm Gretchen Fathor. I live at 1730 Hinman, and I'm in favor of landmark status for 1726. One of the owners' objections to maintaining it would be that it would cost 3.2 million to restore it. We got a bid from Jim Castenholtz, who had successfully restored the Oscar Mayer Mansion, and he said to do just the exterior, to get the brickwork all fixed, the roof fixed, replace rotten wood, fix the windows, rebuild the front porch, 368,000, which is a far cry from 3.2 million, and to do the entire interior, which he based on square footage of what he had to spend redoing the Oscar Mayer Mansion. He did a very high-end restoration of the mansion, and it really, he really would be a good candidate to work on the Harley-Clark Mansion to fix it up.
Thank you.
But at any rate, I will give this copy of the bid, the total bid to do everything, and that's all new mechanicals, new boiler, new wiring...
We gotta wrap it up, we're over our minute.
...da-da-da. Be 1.1 million.
Sure, bring on off the bid, let's bring it up, give it to the clerk, and then we'll get Leela up here. All right, thank you. Terrific, thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Leela Rab.
Okay.
Thank you. And, community... And community. Recreation and community service brings people together to celebrate our greatest natural resource, Lake Michigan. And this is exactly what you want to do, is bring the community together to encourage the growth of this exceptional community. Public space is on the line. View of the lake is on the line for the north end of Evanston, folks. It's the last bit of blue you can see. So adopt the lakefront proposal. It is inclusive, it supports equity, and we can continue to grow in the direction we have wished to grow in. There is money sitting in a fund waiting to be used. We cannot use it until we get the go-ahead. Please, don't let the process that you have educated us to go through be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Jean Lindwall. Is Jean here? If not, then we've got David Garan. I'm having trouble reading the last name. And then Ann Langen after that.
My name is David Garan. I'm speaking in support of the Evanston Lake House proposal, which maintains public access. This issue really has already been decided in favor of Lake House. However, Mayor Hagerty has recycled the idea of an RFP. But Mayor Harity, from your election, you have no mandate. You barely won the election. Also, look at Alderman Rainey, who was also in favor of RFP, barely won her election. And the blue signs drove out the former Alderman Grover from her office. So, look at the political landscape for the new members of the council and consider in favor of the Lake House proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we got Ann Langen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ann Langen. I'm a current resident of Hinman Avenue and I'm here to support the landmarking of 1726 Hinman. I would like to support Jim Colross, who's been very supportive in this adventure. In addition, I would just like to comment briefly that it has struck me that the Preservation Council, who is here, supported, or has commented that they missed out on landmarking this particular property because they would have had to cross Hinman Avenue and include that. So, I just want to recognize their work in that and their support that they missed having this earmarked in the lake shore historic district. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Next up, we've got Susan Moss and then Madeline Ducray. And those will be our final speakers.
Good evening and thank you all for serving on the council. I am Susan Moss. I had a whole lot I could have said, but it's been very eloquently stated already by so many people. So I am interested in pointing out something in particular that has struck me very deeply in the last few days, as I have been reading and listening to all the information on what seems to be going backwards in terms of all the work that has been done by a chosen group of people that were officially chosen by the council to research the house, the Harley Mansion. My concern is that there is a lack of stability and trust, that it happens in a city among its citizens when a visiting issue has been definitely covered and then it's going over and over. We feel like our vote doesn't count. We feel like nobody's listening and then when the answer doesn't come out the way some people want it, we go back and do it again, even though there was an official vote. We have to respect what the council has said in the past and what we, the citizens, are saying now. Keep the mansion in public hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Last up, Madeline Ducray.
Madeline Ducray here. Good evening, people at home. Number one, there's too many meetings on the 20th. I was dipping and dabbing. I went to Twiggs Park event. I went to the property, which I didn't get enough of. We need to have some more of that. Number four, I went to the ethnic committee. I was late. There wasn't a quorum. I was late. We need to have another one. Number four, we had a town hall meeting that night. Very interesting. The panel was okay. Dr. Logan was very well, very informative. We need to get rid of those index cards. You want to be personable? You're like the mayor there. Time us. We need to speak. I don't know how to say this. I'm very disappointed in the city of Evanston. June 19th, June 19th. In New Orleans, we call it June 19th, 1865, Galveston, Texas. I'm disappointed in this council, but I'm more so disappointed in one, two, three council people on this board.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Ducray.
One more thing.
We're at 1:30.
And I want to say one more thing. Simply speaking, I am for the Harley Clark. Keep this building for the people, all the people. Think about that. And don't forget about both of July, like you forgot about June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I want to thank everybody for working with the one-minute time that we all had today for public comments. We did a pretty good job sticking to the one-minute. So, now we will get down to the order of business here with the City Council. The first order today is a special order of business. And I'm going to ask you, Alderman Revelle, if you would just like to read that special order of business and set it in motion, because I know there's going to be a presentation as well.
Right, yes. So, I'm here tonight to report on behalf of the Harley Clark Planning Committee, which I recruited the members of this committee following this council's approval of a motion back in September to ask the Parks and Rec Board and the Lighthouse Landing Committee to work together to come up with a proposal for the future operation of Harley Clark. And so I would just like to thank the members of the Harley Clark Planning Committee, John Bryan, David Campbell, Hector Garcia, Emily Di Stefano, and Pam Elish. They met regularly, starting in November, spent a lot of time both in the meetings and then outside of the meetings in conversation with members of the Lake House and Gardens Group. And they took very seriously their responsibility to develop a plan for the future operation of Harley Clark, a plan that would be both fiscally sound and one that would serve the Evanston community well. So, after many conversations, very early on, though, they really became very enthusiastic about the proposal from the Evanston Lake House and Gardens and their vision for a really exciting environmental education center. And they were really persuaded that the business plan could work. So, then I guess what we're going to hear from now, I'd like to turn over the meeting to Tom Hodgman from the Evanston Lake House and Gardens. He chairs their board and as you've heard from many speakers tonight, they've been hard at work for quite a long time. I can't begin to think of the number of hours they've spent really fine-tuning this plan. And I think we're really excited to hear some more details about it tonight. So, Tom, take it away.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you for having us here tonight. This evening, we're going to present our vision for a restored and repurposed Harley Clark to benefit the whole community. We are asking you to authorize the city to negotiate a lease with Evanston Lake House and Gardens. Once negotiated, the final lease would come back to this body for final approval. As Eleanor mentioned, my name is Tom Hodgman and I'm honored to serve as the President of the Board of Evanston Lake House and Gardens, a homegrown nonprofit organization. I was raised here in Evanston. I went to Lincoln School, Nichols, ETHS, where I graduated in 1999. And I currently work for the Nature Conservancy, where I do finance and fundraising work. The Nature Conservancy is the largest environmental nonprofit in the world. The work you will see here tonight would not be possible without the numerous volunteers, donors, and my fellow board members. Our board includes community leaders like Emily Guthrie, a former alderwoman, and she runs the First Night Program, Bill Brown, who managed the facilities at the Chicago Botanic Gardens for over a decade, attorneys like John Walsh, who is a former president of Central Street Neighbors Association. It also includes journalists, creative film producers, financial professionals, and fundraisers. It's a great team of people, been hard at work at this over the past three years, all on volunteer time. For the past nine months, we've been working with Eleanor Revelle and the rest of the Harley Clark Planning Committee. They've been wonderful to work with, can't stress that enough. And it's with their recommendation and the support of countless Evanston citizens, we kept track of the comments, 95% to 5% in favor tonight. It's with that backing that we speak to you tonight. Let me see if I can get this to work. First, a little bit of context. Evanston is a Great Lakes city. Lake Michigan defines our city geographically, it influences our art and culture, and offers recreation opportunities, and supplies us with abundant fresh drinking water. We're incredibly lucky to sit here at the foot of the largest freshwater body in the world. With its unique location on the lakefront, surrounded by the beach, dunes, Jen's Jensen Gardens, historic landscape installed 90 years ago when the house was built, the Harley Clark Mansion can serve as a gateway to the Great Lakes, a place to connect people and each other with the environment, educate them about this amazing natural endowment, and teach them how to steward it. Evanstonians are a passionate bunch. If we haven't learned that tonight, then we're not listening. And that includes maintaining access to our open space and lakefront, which are a crucial part of our active outdoor culture. We firmly support this principle of Evanston Lake House and Gardens. We believe we should maintain that public access and our plan does that with the beaches, the gardens, and all the grounds around the house. We also celebrate our rich cultural history and architecture in our city. Our historic districts and landmark buildings are defining features of Evanston and they make it a unique place to live. This includes the logo of our city, the Gross Point Lighthouse, National Historic Landmark. But we're not stuck in the past. We look forward to the future with new and creative ideas. At Evanston Lake House, we support this ethic of historic preservation as well, and we drive for creative solutions, and we believe our plan is one that strikes that balance. You know, when I first looked at Harley Clark, like many others, all I saw was a rundown mansion that the city couldn't afford to fix. But as I stepped back, I realized that it was so much more. Harley Clark is the centerpiece of an integrated complex of parks. The Gross Point Lighthouse, the Harley Clark Grounds and the historic Jensen Landscape, the Dunes, Lighthouse Beach, the Lighthouse Park District property, then Noah's Playground and all, and the Community Gardens to the north, much as it was designed by the renowned landscape architect 90 years ago. The parcels you see outlined in red here are owned and controlled by the city. The parcels in blue are controlled by the Lighthouse Park District. And as I began to appreciate how these spaces are connected, I realized that if Harley Clark was not publicly accessible, it would disrupt these connections among these public spaces. And I started to work with the Evanston Lake House Group on their plan to maintain public access without placing a financial burden on the city. Our plan is sensitive to this unique place in the neighborhood, and it preserves the landmark building, maintains that access, just the way it should be. Our vision is to create a year-round venue for environmental education, outdoor recreation, cultural tourism, that will connect people to the lake, our history, and our community. We'll repurpose the building for the next 100 years. We'll provide the needed space for experiential education related to the Great Lakes, like this group you see here from the Lake Dance Group you heard from Claire earlier. They have an amazing program. They'd love to expand that program. We'd like to provide a home for them to do so. It'll also be a unique venue for groups of all kinds to come together on the North Shore. To do this, we seek a long-term lease of the property from the city. We're not asking for a gift. A gift would be if the city brought the building up to code, made it accessible to everybody, and gave it to us. The only gift in the lease arrangement we're proposing here tonight is a gift from our donors to restore this city asset. Evanston Lake House and Gardens is structured as a nonprofit with 501(c)(3) status granted from the IRS. All donations are tax deductible. We are dedicated to delivering on our vision, which has four key pillars: experiential education, outdoor recreation, cultural tourism, and economic development. These aren't new ideas either. We didn't come up with these on our own. Matter of fact, we got all these ideas directly from the lakefront master plan, which was unanimously approved by City Council in 2008. We believe these balance the public uses and will create a financially viable plan. Like most big ideas, to achieve them, there must be partners who share in our vision, those who can imagine a place or time 100 years from now and do it as necessary to create something spectacular, something that will withstand the test of time. The partners you see listed here have been wonderful to work with. We've been hard at work with them over the past few years. We're grateful for their support. We look to grow this list. It includes education experts around the lakes, in our schools, at Northwestern University's Center for Water Research, historic preservation experts, many of whom you heard from already, as well as businesses who would like to rent the space. We will create an experiential environmental education lab that is integrated with the unique outdoor spaces that we've talked about already. It'll be a place for hands-on engagement with our environment, stream tables or sand tanks, like you see here. One image is from an event Lake Dance hosted in the small building by the lagoon that's on the left-hand side. The other are programs that Northwestern currently hosts to have people come into their labs. They don't have enough space, they can't get enough people in there, they'd like to do more of this work. We want to create that space that allows more engagement on these issues. These programs will complement existing education opportunities in our schools and parks department. We're not going to compete with them. You heard from Dick Peach earlier about the ecology center. We think the ecology center is great. We also know it's very popular and it's often oversubscribed, and they overflow the ecology center into other facilities. If they're there for camp on the lakefront, we want those ecology camps to be able to use the types of lab space that we're going to create. We're not here to restrict any of the current uses of that space. We've been working very closely with Lake Dance, who you heard from, as well as a group that's come together called the Lake Shore Sustainability Education Partnership. This includes groups like Northwestern Center for Water Research, their Office of STEM Education Partnerships, and we're developing curriculum and programming that integrates with the new next-generation science standards, which have been adopted by the Illinois Board of Education and are currently being implemented in Evanston. Instead of no child left behind, we'd like to see no child left inside. The restored building will also be a cultural tourism draw for our city, bringing people from Chicagoland area and around the country to Evanston to learn about the work and lives of visionary planners like Daniel Burnham, who lived in Evanston, and Jen's Jensen. In fact, we're working with Jen's Jensen's great-great-grandson, also named Jen's Jensen, on how we could restore the grounds. He has a landscape ecology business, has been very involved with us. We're also working with two women, one of whom you heard from tonight, Judith McBrien, the other is Susan Aaron, who served on the Burnham Centennial Committee for the City of Chicago. They have a track record of developing engaging civic programming and raising money to support it. They brought together a group including open lands, the Art Institute, Field Museum, Botanic Gardens, to create the Burnham Plan Centennial. You've heard about all the STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math education opportunities, and a Burnham Study Center would feed right into that. To give everyone a sense of how we envisioned using the building, we wanted to walk through a few of the key spaces and some of our conceptual layouts and designs. First, we'll look at a conceptual design for an environmental education lab in the basement. And second, we'll look at a conceptual design for a restored conservatory on the first floor. In this image here, this is a current floor plan of the basement and how we would think about reconfiguring it. Along the top of that image, that's the lakeside of the building. And we're going to look at this space right here in the basement, which is the former pottery studio in the Evanston Arts Center. Here's what the basement looks like today. It used to be used for pottery. They had tables and classes in there. We've worked with a local architecture firm. We've worked with a local architecture firm, Studio Tallow, to put together some renderings of what this could look like based on the input from our education committee. Here's a conceptual rendering of what the basement could look like restored for an experiential education lab. It would have wave tables, hands-on experimental activities, it would have the appropriate equipment to do water sampling right when you come in from the beach, microscopes, and other things like that to do real analysis, hands-on experimentation. Next, we're going to look at the first floor. Once again, the top of that image is the lakeside of the building, and we're going to look at the conservatory, which is a key architectural feature of the building. Here's what the conservatory looks like today. It used to be used as a metalworking facility at the Evanston Arts Center. It opens through that staircase into the main building. We're going to look at a rendering here of what that conservatory could look like if it was restored and the glass was cleaned up so you could see out of the windows. We've talked to a lot of people. Matter of fact, we get emails on a monthly basis from people who want to rent the space from us. Unfortunately, we can't do it. But we believe that that's consistent with the lakefront master plan, and in order to ensure broad access to the space, we'd like to reserve sometimes for community and nonprofit groups in our plan at low or no cost. The lease with the city that we're seeking to negotiate would establish guidelines for these activities to maintain balance with other uses in the neighborhood. For example, large group rentals will primarily be in the off-season, colder months or evenings to not interfere with the community uses of the beach and parkland and our educational uses of the space, which is our primary goal. Further, we've confirmed the viability of renting the space with local operators of similar spaces who indicate that they are overbooked. That includes places like the Women's Club, The Grove, Burger Mansion, these places are So what is all this going to cost? And I apologize for the size here on the screen. To realize this vision, the building is going to require a comprehensive rehab, but it can be done in phases. We reviewed all the prior architectural and restoration plans for the building on the city's website with a number of experts in preservation and construction. We've done two open houses at the building, brought in experts from Landmarks Illinois, architecture firms, general contractors who have done similar projects in Evanston, including Keem Residential, who's here tonight. And we've looked at this hard. At a demonstration scale, which would include bringing the building up to code compliance, ADA accessibility, and starting a demonstration education lab and community meeting space, we also need some additional operating startup for the nonprofit, we think it's going to cost about $1.1 million. The city has previously approved $250,000 for repairs in the building. Also, as of today, at 4:00 PM, the last time I checked our donations, we currently have $96,000 in pledges and cash on hand. Between the money the city has and the money that we've already raised, that leaves about $780,000 to open the building in code compliance at a demonstration scale. For the full restoration, completing the restoration of the second and third floors and the coach house as well, the grounds outside the building, we think it's going to take another $3.8 million. That can be done in subsequent phases over time. The total fundraising need is about $5 million for this project. This graph shows our fundraising to date, and there's an important story to tell here. What we've seen is that the more we tell our story and the closer and closer we get to commitment from the city, the more money we raise. We had a successful community meeting with the Harley Clark Planning Committee in April. We saw a little uptick in giving. The Parks and Rec Board and Lighthouse Landing Harley Clark Committee recommended our plan. We saw a big uptick in giving, about $40,000. We come here tonight, the City Council meeting, our total fundraising is $104,000 as we speak tonight. We've spent about $8,000 of that on marketing and architects and some other things. That gets us to the $96,000 we have in hand. If the city commits to this, people are going to start donating more. We need the commitment from the city. People always ask about financial sustainability, and we are committed to that going forward. In full swing, we estimate the operating budget will be about $500,000 per year. Revenue will come from a variety of sources, ongoing fundraising and grants to support our programming, group rentals, coach house rental, small rentals to corporate groups. We anticipate some program revenue, as well as seasonal events. Those revenues will be used to support the expenses of running the nonprofit. That includes our staff salaries and benefits, buildings, garden, and maintenance, overhead insurance, administration, and utilities. As a nonprofit, we don't need to maximize our profit, we just need to cover our operating costs. Further, the repurposed house would provide jobs in the community at our nonprofit, as well as jobs related to event rentals and businesses that want to use the space, and create a multiplier effect from people who come to visit Evanston and visit this building. They're going to shop here, they're going to eat here, they're going to stay in the In terms of governance, we want this to be a public-private partnership. We want to work with you all. First, there'd be a lease with the city, that's what we're here talking about tonight. It would outline permitted uses and general guidelines for our partnership. Second, we have a board of directors that oversees our nonprofit operations. We have been engaging with the community for years now, we plan to keep doing that, and we'll also have a full-time staff. We want to grow our board of directors, and we think we should add to it, and as a public-private partnership, maybe people from the city should join that board. For instance, the Seventh Ward Alderman, maybe they should join the board, someone from the Parks and Rec Department, or other community representatives. You know, people always ask me, why am I working on this? Especially my wife, I'm sure she's cursing my name as I missed bedtime again tonight with my two little kids. There's a lot of reasons. But in the end, it comes down to love. I love this place. As one of my colleagues at the Nature Conservancy says, "We only protect things we love, and we only love the things that we know." And I hope that we've helped you to get to know Harley Clark and our organization here more tonight, so that you'll help us protect this place. This is a picture of my five-year-old son, Sam. He just lost his first tooth tonight. I missed it. He's standing in the hemlocks around the grotto that was designed by Jens Jensen 90 years ago, basically to this day, when the Harley Clark House was built. He loves exploring the gardens, the grounds, the buildings at Lighthouse Landing. And to see the look of joy when he chases a butterfly, or finds a bird's nest, or imagine he's storming a castle, it's something I'm never going to forget. It's something I want Sam's children, my future grandchildren, and everyone in Evanston to experience. Whether you're black, brown, yellow, white, rich or poor, young or old, this is the place for you. While not everyone is able to have their own house in the lake, in Evanston, we're fortunate enough to have a lake house that belongs to all of us. Let's keep it that way, starting here tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Eleanor, do you want to take the conversation?
Yeah, thank you so much, Tom. That was really terrific.
Thank you, guys.
So I would like to make a motion that the City Council authorize the city manager to negotiate a long-term lease agreement with Evanston Lake House and Gardens to operate an environmental education center and meeting and event space at the Harley Clark property, and that the $250,000 allocated by this council in September 2016 for improvements to the property continue to be reserved for improvements and critical repairs at Harley Clark.
Alderman Wilson?
Wait, wait, have a second.
I'm sorry. Oh.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, oh.
I find myself in a difficult situation here. I look out, I see a lot of friends here, I see a lot of people that I have personally worked with for those six, seven years in dealing with the property. And it's a great presentation. I visit this park on a regular basis, I see Mr. Hodgman there together, I see other neighbors who I see on a regular basis there, I know their dogs, I know what they like to do there. So it's a special place to me, and I've worked really, really hard for all of these years. But I represent the whole city, and one of the challenges I face is the fact that through this process, and as we got into September, somebody mentioned the prior resolution, we passed a resolution that said specific things. And a little bit of legislative history, the resolution ended up reading that the Harley Clark Mansion and Coach House will be owned and operated by the City of Evanston. And many of you were here that night, everybody was very happy and pleased, or most people were happy and pleased with that. We directed the committee to come up with a plan for how the property would be used. The prior draft of the resolution that ultimately got passed had language in it that said, "The process for identifying other uses, operators, and owners of the property has ended." That was the original proposal. Now, we took that part out, and part of my personal reason for taking that out was to provide the committee with some greater flexibility in figuring out what was going to happen with the property. I didn't want them to be too tied into what it was going to be. So collectively, I think as a body, we've waited for, we've waited for the report, they've worked very hard, I know a lot of people have been very involved, spent an extraordinary amount of time with the Lake House group, and it's a beautiful proposal. And I've heard a lot of, I'll say it ranges from conspiracy theories to just angry things. The idea of doing the RFP is not to go back to the beginning, okay? We gave the committee a specific task, and we represented that to the whole city, and we put it on the website, and we said to the whole city, "Will be owned and operated by the City of Evanston." The committee's got a different proposal, and that's okay. And we left room in modifying the original resolution to provide for that. But the committee doesn't really have the authority to undo the council vote. The council voted on something, we said this is what we're doing, this is what we've committed to. I made a commitment, we all made a commitment, and I think the vote was unanimous. But for the committee to come back and say, "Okay, we have a tenant, here's who we're going to give it to," it's contrary to what we passed before. So that's where the idea of the request for proposal comes from, because we're going to undo, to some extent, what was done on September 12th. We passed something, and that's what was done. So in order to undo that, we have to have a mechanism. I don't want to go back to the square one. I don't want to go back and say, to have conversations about it being torn down. I haven't heard anybody say that, and I know a couple people mentioned that tonight, "We don't want to go back to that." That's not where we're going back to. So to the extent that the committee was making a report, they've reported back to us, "Here's the plan and the use." So the only way to proceed, in my mind, and if somebody has a better idea, I'd be open to listening to it, but to me, based on the commitment and the vote that we had before, the only way to proceed would be to issue a request for proposals that is in line with what Alderman Ravel's committee has presented. I don't see really any other alternatives to what's been presented. I don't think that there are other lake house groups that are going to come out and say, "Yeah, we're going to do the exact same thing." But this is the process we set up, and we get accused all the time of not being transparent. And unfortunately, just because I want something, maybe I don't feel like I can skip the transparency part. If we're going to be honest and transparent, we have to live up to the commitments and what we said. So if we're going to change it, we also have to be straightforward about that. Most of the people...
Order in the chambers, all right? This is the opportunity for council to have a discussion.
So on September 12th, people were clapping, everybody was excited, okay? This is the commitment everybody made, okay? We want the city to own and operate the property. We opened it up to other ideas, and an idea came forward, okay? And, you know, over the past weekend, and even tonight with the citizen comments, there've been a lot of people who've had very thoughtful, engaged conversations, I really appreciate it, I think the rest of the council appreciates that. There've been a handful of people who have persisted with hateful personal attacks, said things that are not true, have absolutely no basis for any context. People have accosted me and accused me of a bunch of things having to do with this property, and I can look in the eyes of a bunch of you, and you know that for years and years and years, I have worked on this. I've spent, you know, back to the, you know, missing dinners and missing teeth falling out, I've missed an awful lot of that for this one specific thing. And you put that in the context of, we have a city that's kind of teetering on the edge of like really big crises, okay? We've got a state that hasn't passed a budget. We have nonprofits, one of the nonprofits just announced that they had to lay off 71% of their staff. We have people in the community that are in desperate need of services yesterday that tomorrow will not get their services. We provide food for children. Those are priorities. Notwithstanding those priorities, we all spend time on doing this. So let's be realistic, and let's be fair, and let's respect the process. You expect transparency from us, we pass something, and we have to follow the rules. You can't skip the rules just because you want it to turn out a certain way. I want it to turn out a certain way, but that doesn't mean I get to skip the rules.
Alderman Fleming?
So I'll just speak as the new council member. I know you all have been talking about this for six years, apparently, and I've been up here for six weeks or whatever. One, I will applaud the report, I think it was really great and showed a lot of dedication and commitment. What I will say, from my understanding, and I'm the first one to say that I have been wrong before, my concern as I addressed to Tom and to Alex Block was just transparency. I understand frustration, I'm very excited you all are here to engage. I also understand frustration when you're told, "Give your input, we want to hear from you," so on and so forth, and then you feel like that was not heard. I totally understand that. What I tried to get clarity on was what the direction was given to the group. And from what I understand, and city staff maybe can chime in here to make sure I'm correct, the directive was that this group, this committee, was going to go forward and determine a plan that also was then going to identify and include other nonprofits. So I guess my concern is that while you went forward and made a plan, they're also somehow in there became a nonprofit, or you've made a nonprofit or found a nonprofit or what have you, that was going to execute said plan or that made said plan. And my concern there with transparency is that when you decided, whatever the plan was, and maybe it's chicken and egg, did the rest of the city or did other nonprofits know, "Here is the plan, we'd like you to participate?" Or was it the other way, which was, "Here's the plan, and here's a group that became a nonprofit, and we're going to execute the plan." And I think that's where I have hesitation, not that it's not a lovely building, not that I don't want it to be public, I definitely want it to be public, all the things that you mentioned, not things that I'm jumping up and down about, but would totally support for my council seat. But I do need to make sure that the committee did what it was executed to and not further, because I know that we are a town of many great ideas and many nonprofits and many people who might be sitting at home or read this tomorrow on Evanston Now and say, "Hey, I didn't know they were looking for other nonprofits. I also want to do X, Y, and Z at the beach." Is that viable? I have no idea. also want to do X, Y, and Z at the beach." Is that viable? I have no idea. But I do think in transparency, we need to give those people an opportunity to come forward in case they didn't know. And I ask this to the two people of the committee. I ask this of Eleanor Revel. Did people know that now was the time to come forward with their ideas? Or not? And that's really my concern. Obviously, I represent a ward that's south of Evanston. I'm sure many people travel to Lighthouse Beach and would love this opportunity. But there also might be people in my community who would like to partner and like to be in the proposal stage, and like to make their pitch to the council. And I just want to make sure that we did our due diligence to make sure they knew that was an opportunity.
Alderman Wilson.
You know, one thing, I don't know if everybody's been to the property lately, but we've continued to make a financial commitment to the property as a whole. We've spent a lot of money. The fog houses look beautiful, I think. I've been by them many times. So we continue to make a financial commitment and overall commitment to this property. People continue to enjoy it. Kids get to do their camps there. It's not like the park is shut down. So I didn't want that to be overlooked. It's important to note that. We did make a commitment of $250,000 to make sure that the property doesn't deteriorate any further, and that's still out there and available as we proceed. Again, you know, if I knew this in September, maybe I would have made a different resolution. But I didn't have this in this form in September. So what I'm going to suggest is to amend Alderman Revel's motion to, rather than negotiate the lease, to issue a, have the city staff prepare a request for proposal that incorporates these elements. You know, city continues to own the property. It's available for public use. It's a nonprofit. You know, to include these items that were part of the approved plan in that request. And I think that would obviously line up very nicely with the group's proposal. If the motion is seconded, I would want it done in very short order. I would hope to see it back in July, so we can get it moving along and get that issued and proceed. So that's my motion.
Second.
So it's a motion to amend. It's a friendly. I hope it's a friendly amendment, but that's the intention. So it's not being accepted. You don't have to accept it.
All right. So it'll be a substitute motion. So we would basically, let's continue the conversation here, if there are any other Aldermen that want to make any remarks. And then we would vote on Alderman Revel's motion.
No.
Excuse me.
You'd have to vote on the amendment.
We'd vote on the substitute. We'd vote on the substitute first.
Point of order. Point of order. You would, no, 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 no. If it's being considered a substitute motion, it would be taken away, and we would vote on the original motion, and then he would have to make the motion. No. I think your motion is on-
All right. Let's just, Michelle, could you give us clarity on this?
And why is it a substitute motion?
Because she didn't accept it as a friendly.
Good evening. Michelle Mason-Cup, Deputy City Attorney, City Council-
Can't really hear you, Michelle.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. City Council Rule 18.8 indicates a substitute of any original motion or proposition may be considered. If adopted by the council, it shall entirely supersede the original motion of proposition. So neither has been acted on yet.
Okay. Well, let's vote on a substitute motion.
I believe that's the case. The council rule does not speak to that, but I believe that that is the case.
All right. So we'll vote on the substitute. We're going to vote on the substitute motion first, but we're going to finish discussion of any council members. I had Alderman Simmons, Rue Simmons.
We're talking.
Nope. We're still talking.
About a week and a half ago, I too met with Tom and Alec Block, and really impressed with their enthusiasm and commitment to this project. Really impressive. I had never been to the Harley Clark Mansion, and I immediately called city staff to see if I could have access. And I went over, and not only had I not been to Harley Clark Mansion, I had never been to the Lake House Beach, Lighthouse Beach, or to the Lighthouse. And so I represent a population of residents that have not had that experience. And so when I stood in the mansion, I got a warm feeling about that statement. We could all own a lake house on the beach. And I was inspired to think of young children citywide that could go and enjoy that experience. Enjoy the dunes. I didn't really know what they were. Just the whole compound there is something that's really special. So I absolutely support that we keep that as the best public use. I absolutely cannot support us spending any more money at this time on Harley Clark. I understand there's been $250,000 that's been set aside. There's been $350,000 that was spent on two one-room fog houses that have copper roofs and a very limited use and a very select representation of our community. And that has happened while Fleetwood Jordan improvements have gone, pushed aside for now three years. It's needing a mechanical upgrade, electrical upgrade, bathroom renovations. And that facility is serving, I don't know how many residents, a lot of residents. I'm there all the time. The building is very active. It's serving seniors and residents with disabilities and vulnerable youth, and very important programming. Fam is there. They're having their 50th year anniversary. So I can't support any more funds going to Harley Clark. But at the same time, I absolutely want to make sure that it's kept as a public use. I would challenge the board to consider your leadership to better represent the residents that you are inviting to participate in programming there. I asked for board information, and I don't think that it is the best representation of our community. I think that a more thoughtful board participation would get you the outcomes that you are saying you're looking for in terms of serving the broader population. So I would challenge you there. And additionally, I haven't seen an extraordinary ability to raise the funds. $5 million. To date, you have near $100,000, and that's in pledges. I understand that the majority of that was in the last couple of days, really. And so I do believe that your heart is in it, and the programming is great. It's very valuable. I'm not certain that the proposal that we see before us is the most thoughtful and inclusive one for our city at this time. It would be great, like in a dreamy world, if we could have Shorefront on a floor, and also Dejé Coleman Foundation in a wing, and also the Lake House programming that you have. Why not unite the nonprofits that are already doing great work and do not have a home, so that we're certain that young children, black children, minority, low, moderate income folks are able to go into that building? I loved it. Every free chance I get now, where the weather cooperates, and I have a free moment in my schedule, I'm at Lighthouse Beach, so you can find me there. Got some fancy beach chairs for it and everything. But I'm hopeful that you don't abandon this and that we can cooperate in some way, but you do come back in the competitive process with a stronger proposal.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the amended motion. The, excuse me, thank you, Alderman Fisk. The substitute motion to have the city issue a request for proposal that defines that this is a city-owned property, that the use needs to be for available public use, that it is to be focused on bidders who are nonprofits for this property. And to come back to, have the city manager come back to council in July with that draft RFP on the agenda?
Yes. And just to say it one more time, because I know we'll get an email, none of the requests should include anything about demolition, so not tearing it down.
Correct. And this does not in any way exclude the Lake House Group from submitting their proposal as part of that RFP process.
No, I think the assumption is that they are.
Indeed. All right. Alderman Wen.
Yes. I'd like to include in that, and I do want to say that I'm so, so impressed, I will take a minute, with this proposal. It is vastly better than what we saw before. I think it's very, very thorough. There are some things that Mr. Hodgman and I have had conversations about, about my concerns about this. But I do think that, as Alderman Wilson has said, the process is critically important. But I would also like to add that we include in the RFP that it would be for educational purposes, a not-for-profit for educational purposes.
I think, well, I mean, it would kind of preclude then, well, I guess Shorefront's educational, but-
I don't know what that does to, like, again, they've got a cafe in their proposal and things like that. I mean, I don't know if we want to restrict it that much.
Right. And the events and that. So I think that's, I don't want to include that.
All right. Then, well, I'll accept that.
Okay. All right. So that is the, sorry, you guys, the new motion. And Alderman Braithwaite, second in that. City Clerk, can we have, oh, excuse me. Alderman Fleming wants to make a couple of remarks before we do a vote.
I'm sorry, real quick, just so there's complete transparency. So we're saying they're going to come back in July. Do we want to give a date in July? I don't mean to be so haino, but-
It would be the second meeting, which is, we just canceled the middle of the month meeting.
The 17th?
July 10th.
10th or 24th.
Okay. I just put-
Do you want a date?
It's 10th.
July 10th to come back with the draft RFP.
Right. Okay. All right. So July 10th for the draft RFP. Again, we want to move it along as quickly as we can.
Okay. All right. So that is the motion. City Clerk, can you take a vote, please?
Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revel.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
All right. So that motion passes with a 7 to 2 vote. Okay? All right. That finishes up the special order of business. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey, I understand we have some new procedures today for the consent agenda. We also, Alderman Rainey, have the situation with, when we get to the bills, we may want to do this the same way we've done it at the last couple of council meetings, with M1 and then A1 put together, and then we'll do A vote, and then we'll do A2. So Alderman Sufferton, can recuse himself.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'll do the bills, but then Alderman Braithwaite and the other committee chairs are going to do the consent agenda. So we also have, before we get started, I did not get the adjustment to, oh, I don't think we have to-
Yeah.
But there was, there was going to be a correction to the bills list, but there is not one. Okay. I'm sorry. So the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, May 22nd and June 12th. I'll move approval of that. Administration and Public Works Committee is for Alderman Braithwaite.
Sure.
Does the bills.
Do you want to pass the bills first?
No.
Okay.
That's on the committee.
All right. I'd like to move item A1 payroll, May 29th, 2017, through June 11th, 2017, the dollar amount of $2,810, 258.63 cents.
Is there a second? Okay. That's consent agenda, but we're going to have to hold on the bills. So we're going to do a vote right now. City Clerk will call it on M1 and A1, and then we'll go to the bills.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. You can recuse as well on the bills if you want. Let me get a point of order from the city manager on that. So let's go ahead. Clerk, read. Can you take a roll call on M1 and A1?
Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Okay. M1 and A1 pass 9 to 0 on the consent agenda. A2 is the bills list. Before we go back to you, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Rue Simmons.
You pull off the-
No, it's going to stay the same. Alderman Rainey decided to allow it to pass.
I think Alderman Simmons has a conflict with something on the bills list, with Sunshine Bill.
Okay.
What do we do, Alderman?
Or should she then just recuse herself along with Alderman Sufferton?
I would suggest on the bills list that Alderman Sufferton and Alderman Rue Simmons, because of the Sunshine, both recuse themselves. Okay? So why don't you go ahead, Alderman Braithwaite, and take us through the bills, and then we can do a vote and get on to the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move item A2 for action. Bills list, June 27th, 2017, and the dollar amount of $4,714, 121.83 cents. I'd also like to move the credit card activity period ending in April 30th, 2017, in the dollar amount of $181, 147.56 cents.
Okay. Clerk, could you take a roll?
Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Upstain.
Recuse. Recuse.
Recuse. Actually, I have a statement. Members of the city council, as you know, I am a full-time employee of Sunshine Enterprises and must recuse myself from the vote on the approval of the bills list issued by Sunshine Enterprises for part of 2017 grant funding.
Thank you.
Alderman Sufferton.
I recuse myself due to a potential conflict with my representation of Amazon.
Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
All right. A2 bills list passes 7 to 0 with two recusing. Excuse me. Yep. Go ahead and run through the rest.
Members of council, I'd like to move item A3, approval of the payment to sell Glink and professional services rendered to the city clerk's office during the 2017 municipal election in the dollar amount of $3,543.75. This is for action. I'd also like to move item A4.1, the agreement renewal with Sam Goss and Associates for handyman services. This is in the dollar amount of $26,268. That's for action. I'd also like to move item A4.2, drinking fountain lead sampling results. That's for action. I'd also like to move item A4.3, contract with Alfred Benish and Company for 30 downtown transition main engineering services. That's in the dollar amount of $305, 890.54. I'd also like to move item 4.4, which is a contract with Gim Electric Company for noise theater lighting replacement. That's in the dollar amount of $129.500. Also, I'd like to move item 4.5, contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly for Emerson Street wholesale water meter engineering services. And that's in the dollar amount of $124, 487. That's for action. Item 4.6, change order number three for the water treatment plant reliability improvement project with CDM Smith. That project is in the dollar amount of $82,400. That project is in the dollar amount of $82,403. I'd also like to move item 4.7, excuse me, 7, approval for the 2017 pay station expense to the total parking solutions, and that's in the dollar amount of $33,000. Members of council, I'd also like to move item 4.8, purchase of police administrative services vehicles from Curry Motors, and that's in the dollar amount of $55,188. I'd also like to move item A4.9, that's a purchase of trackless model MT-7 tractor from EJ Equipment, Inc., and the dollar amount is $156,193.25. I'd also like to move item A4.10. It's the second contract extension with the community counseling services company LLC, and that's in the dollar amount of $97,500. I'd also like to move, excuse me, item A5, Resolution 56-R-17 relating to the prevailing wages for public works projects. That's for action. I'd also like to move item A6. It's the Resolution 60-R-17 authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with the number two to supply and sell water to the village of Skokie. Did anyone want to speak to that? Alderman Rainey?
I could pardon.
Did you want to speak to item A6?
Selling water to Skokie.
It's on, it's on the agenda.
You're good, you didn't want, okay.
Members of council, I'd also like to move item A7, Resolution 61-R-17, authorizing the city manager and the city staff to execute the reorganization to certain city departments and divisions and to return to city council for related code amendments. I'd also like to move item A8, Ordinance 14-0-17, amending the Evanston City Council Title 11 Administrative Adjudication. I think we voted, we moved to do this for introduction and the action. So do I need to take that off? No. All right. Item A9 is Ordinance 22-17, amending the city code section 3-4-C2 Liquor Control Regulations Powers and Duties. That's also for introduction. Item A10, Ordinance 46-0-17, amending the city codes...
Take that off, please.
Yes, okay, I'll be addressed later. Item A11, Ordinance 50-0-17, amending the city code to establish a four-way stop control at the intersection of Woodbine Avenue and Jenk Street, and that's in the dollar amount Just says the sign is 150, and I guess it's coming out of the fiscal year budget for 50,000. Item A12, Ordinance 51-0-17, authorizing the sale of a surplus fleet vehicles owned by the city of Evanston. That's also for action. Concludes my report.
Again, do we have a motion?
No.
That was my motion.
Mr. Mayor, Planning and Development is next.
I just need a second.
It's going on.
Oh, yeah, we're just going on, you're right. I'm sorry, guys, because of the new, we're going on to the new. Okay, so, excuse me. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and we're recommending that Ordinance 7017 be removed from the agenda in its entirety. Staff is asking that they give other consideration to this matter, having to do with generators. P2 is Ordinance 56017, and grants a special use for a public utility and major zoning relief for a fence or wall at 2506 Green Bay Road. That's for introduction. Ordinance 57017 grants a special use for a commercial indoor recreation known as Sharp Edge CrossFit at 132426 Dodge Avenue, and we've been asked to introduce, suspend the rules, and take action on this matter tonight, and therefore I do so. Ordinance 47017 grants landmark status for a building and lot of record at 1726 Hinman. I'm moving that from, removing that from the consent agenda, and we'll address it later. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk, Human Services.
H1 is Ordinance 49017, amending the city code Title VII by adding Chapter 18 Pavement Sealant applicators. The Evanston Environmental Board recommends that we adopt the ordinance banning the use of coal tar pavement sealers.
Will you please remove that, Parliament Fisk?
Yes, it's off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Then we have H2, Ordinance 48017, amending the city code definitions and the city code section 814.6, penalty of Title VIII, Chapter 14, drug paraphernalia control. Administrative adjudication officer Sue Brenner recommends adoption of these ordinances, including definitions and penalty, imposing a $200 fine for violating Title VIII, Chapter 14. That is for action.
Okay, is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second, all right. Does anyone need me to summarize all the things, the adjustments that were made?
No.
Are we all on stand? Okay, City Clerk, could you take a roll call?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes with the modifications that we discussed, nine to nothing. Okay, moving to the standing committees. Alderman Braithwaite, Administration, Public Works.
Item A10, members of council, I'd like to pass Ordinance 40, excuse me, move for action, Ordinance 46-0-17, amending the city code section 9-5-15, regulating small unmanned aircrafts in the city of Evanston. It's for action.
Okay, we'll go to discussion. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I thought the gentleman that was here earlier, who indicated he was a pilot and was involved in training people to use drones, seemed like a very responsible person, and it seems as though a lot of the regulations having to do with drones come from higher up, and I'm not sure, I guess somebody got hit with a drone someplace in town, and that this caused this ordinance to be written, but I'm not sure that it really is needed, and I think his comments were well taken, and what are we going to do? I mean, I don't think I'm going to support this.
Okay, well, let's go...
If there's some reasonable argument for it, I'll listen.
Let's go to Alderman Wen.
Yes, Alderman Rainey, actually, it was someone who called me, a resident of the third ward, who was actually in a fourth ward park, and their daughter was not hit by the drone, but was, it flew very close to her head. And then when they, she and her husband, asked the drone operator to please move further away, the person became very hostile and then started buzzing them with the drone. So she contacted me, and she had done a lot of her own independent research and found out that along the North Shore, we are one of the few communities that doesn't regulate drones, and in fact, the city of Chicago has a drone ordinance that they passed, which is quite similar to ours. And apparently, unlike what we heard from some of the folks who came here, and actually one of the speakers is someone who is, who is from Elgin and is suing Elgin over a similar drone ordinance that they have passed out there, is that the FAA, that there isn't very much federal regulation about this, and that the FAA has a national drone registry that's impending. I'm actually reading from the Chicago Sun-Times, but they haven't done that yet, and the FAA has not yet issued any comprehensive guidelines to regulate drones. So I don't know about the rest of you, some of you are new, but I have had a number of complaints from residents who live in some of the apartment buildings around Main and Chicago, when, who live on the seventh floor or sixth floor of a drone outside their condo windows. And, I mean, this has happened, I'd say, at least four times. So I think that we do need to regulate these. The last time that, when I, when I made the reference to this, I mean, some of you may remember or know someone who operates a radio-controlled airplane. Those are very heavily regulated, because they have, they are potentially very dangerous to people. So I think drones have the problem of invading someone's privacy, and also that we don't know how well-trained the drone operator is. You know, you're, anyone can buy these now and, and then fly them, and, you know, they may be lightweight, but no matter what, if they flew into you, you wouldn't be very happy about it. So I think that we are taking the right step, because I don't think the federal government has taken very many steps forward on this, and I, I have had complaints from residents, and I think this is the, we aren't cutting new ground here. This is what other communities right here in Illinois have already done, and I think that we should do it.
Well, I think the case you cite, though, is a case of an obnoxious, irresponsible family, and a 911 call on your cell phone would have handled it, and I'm not sure...
They did, they contacted the police right away, and the police came.
Right, but a FAA regulation, I don't think would have affected that family in any way. I mean, that's just, you know...
But, but Alderman Rainey, I have had other complaints.
Right, I heard what you said.
I mean, it's not just this single family. I'm saying I've had at least four complaints of people who have, who live on the sixth, seventh, eighth floor of a condo building to discover a drone outside their windows. You know, and they have, they have cameras on them. I think we need to be able to have, assure people that they're, they have a level of privacy in their own backyard or in their seventh-floor condo building.
So let's go to Alderman Fisk.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had questions about this, too, and not being familiar with the aircraft, the hobbyist that is maybe running aircraft in the parks. I don't, I don't know what we control in our parks. I guess, do we control aircraft, Wally, and prohibit model airplanes in parks?
Sure.
I'll let the Corporation Council.
No, we do not currently regulate model aircraft.
Okay, so somebody could run, operate a model airplane in a city park.
Currently.
Yeah.
And I think Alderman Fisk has Alderman Wen mentioned, there are other regulations outside of the local government that manage that, and I think one of the challenges with drones is those similar-type regulations just don't exist yet, and it will be decided in the courts at one point, I would think, with that. So that's the challenge that we're facing.
Okay. I'm not sure how I feel about this. I think that I could see kids going out with their moms and dads and getting a drone for their birthday, and they're playing in the park, and somebody comes along and says, "You're not allowed to do that," and "We're going to give you a ticket," or "We're going to do something with..." I, so I hear what you're saying, Alderman Wen. I have not had any calls at all about this, which I guess contributes to my, you know, my not knowing how to, how to handle this situation, but I guess I'm, I'd rather have more information.
Well, then, I'd like to move to hold this until the next meeting and get more information to help educate the rest of the council about this.
Do you need a second?
Yes, please.
A second.
Thank you.
Tell them.
No, just to the next meeting.
You got it.
Okay, that, that item A10 is held to the next city council meeting. All right, let's move on. Alderman Braithwaite, did you have anything else in administration?
Sure.
That's it? Okay, let's move over to Planning and Committee. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is P4, Ordinance 47017. I would like to move to hold granting landmark status, not hold, I'm sorry, to table granting landmark status to our August 14 meeting. This acknowledges the need to handle this matter within the 120 days. This is way prior to that 120-day requirement.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Wilson, okay, that item is held.
Need to vote on that.
Oh, excuse me, can you...
Just a voice vote.
Can we have a voice vote on...
It's a table.
The ta, we're ta, yeah, we're tabling...
But it's a date certain, it must be handled on August 14.
All right, so the vote, the vote, the vote is to hold ordinance, a table, excuse me, table, Ordinance 47017 until a date certain, which will be August 14.
Yes, it must be.
Excuse me? Good. Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to confirm with Corporation Council that that's within the time period specified from the Preservation Commission?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. We'll revisit that on August 14. Alderman Fisk. Oh, well, we're up to you, right? Human Services Committee, H1.
Yes, it's, H1 is off the consent agenda, it's Ordinance 49017, amending city code Title VII by adding Chapter 18 Pavement Sealant applicators. The Evanston Environment Board recommends city council adoption of Ordinance 49017, banning the use of coal tar pavement sealers in the city of Evanston. It's for introduction.
Alderman Braithwaite? You know, there was a second from Alderman Wen. Alderman, let's have discussion.
Yeah, it was just, I realize this is only up for introduction. I'd asked at the Human Services meeting, just to get a little bit more information from our staff in terms of the economic impact, the two questions that I had, and I think the first one was answered, is I, I don't under, I don't know all the elements that are involved in coal tar, but I do know that we do cold patch for the streets, so I've heard that before, and, and I just wanted to make sure that we don't use it and it wouldn't have any impact to future road repairs, so I think that's across the board. No, but I did want to understand if there's an economic impact to residents, particular contractors who use the coal tar, and what is the cost for the substitute that they would use all over town and everywhere else, as well as how would this be enforced?
Alderman Wen.
Well, my understanding is that neither the city nor the school districts, either school district, use this at all anymore, and that it is not sold commercially in, by Home Depot or any of the other, it's not sold to, like, the residential home user.
So like that regular black tar that most people use on their, that's totally different?
That's, that's not the same thing.
See, you guys have that information. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk. Yeah, Alderman.
Yeah, could, could we ask Dave Stoneback just a comment on that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Clerk Reed, the city, any of our products do not, that we currently contract out for or use in-house, do not include a coal tar product, and it is also my understanding that you cannot buy that type of a sealant at Home Depot or any other commercial store.
Is that because we ask them not to use it?
No, they have not been selling it for a long time.
No, I mean, the, the contractors that come in and work for, work for the city, do we ask them not to use that product?
Our specs would prohibit them using it.
Oh, okay.
So where is it used?
There are apparently some larger applicators that might seal a parking lot, so it's a sealant that you put on top of a parking lot, where you see them close it off for, on a Saturday, Sunday, and they put a sealer down on it. The majority of the people do not use it, but there are still some firms that might go out and use it, because they're not buying it at Home Depot, they're buying it from a distributor, that type of a product.
So it could be used in Evanston, and we just don't know it?
Not know it.
Like by private, by private contractors?
Yes, it could be. And, and then the way that we would regulate it is that anybody that applies a coal tar sealant would have to become an applicator or be licensed by the city to apply coal tar. The cost is free, we just, it's a form that they fill out agreeing that they will not use a coal tar product when they do the sealant, and this is what is currently done in Winnetka for the past several years. Six contractors register with them annually and say, you know, "We're not going to use a coal tar product." And ordinance has recently been passed in Willamette as well, and I do not know at yet how many applicators have applied there, but we are anticipating about six applicators getting the permit from Evanston to apply this. The thing would be is if somebody sees a product going down, you can always just stop and ask that company, "Can I see your application?"
Alderman Braithwaite?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. It satisfies my questions.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, what about, Dave... What about state regulations? Is there any regulation at the state level? Because I know they do pesticide control.
To my knowledge, there is no regulations by the state. I know that there is a proposed bill that would do it, but at this point in time, with the other matters that the state's addressing, it's not come up to the top of their...
But it doesn't cost any money, so they can do it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so there was a motion for introduction for Ordinance 49017 that was seconded. It says no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so we have gotten through all the standing committees. Call of the wards. Let's start with Alderman Wen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one item. I want to remind Third Ward residents that I am having office hours on Thursday, July 6, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Brothers K., and actually, anyone in the city can come and talk to me. Happy 4th of July.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. I want to celebrate and congratulate Fifth Ward resident Rodney Pryor for his graduation from Georgetown University, as well as his draft, NBA draft, to the Brooklyn Nets.
Wow.
So congratulations to Rodney. As well, we had a wonderful June tea celebration at Twiggs Park. It was lots of fun, very diverse participation and attendance. We had some food trucks and a great concert, so if you missed it, you missed something special. Thank you.
She's right. Alderman Suffertin.
I would just like to echo the mayor's statement earlier and thank city staff for their hard work with storm cleanup this past 10 days, and also just remind Sixth Ward residents about water main repairs on Grant Street between Cowper and Lawndale, which start July 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to mention to all the members of the council that I represented you and the mayor at Fire Chief Sander Hicks' funeral and wake on the 16th of... No, on the 24th of June. And it was quite a moving event and just very well-attended. And also to remind everybody in Evanston, really, it's not just an Eighth Ward event, but on August 2, there's going to be the first community meeting along with the city of Chicago regarding the complete renovation and street scape of Howard Street from just east of the shopping center, the Howard Target Shopping Center, all the way to Custer. Street and sidewalk renovation, and it's going to be at the Levy Center at 7:00. So please come. Also, congratulations to our Parks Department on being a gold medal finalist. Is there anything we could do to help with that? Can we, like, send letters and support? Vote? No?
They win, we'll have a really big party.
Pardon me?
When they win, we'll have a really big party.
Oh, yeah, when we have a real, really big party. Also, on the 18th of July, starting at 5:00 at Brummel Park, is probably the best concert and food truck fest of the year, so mark your calendars and get there early. That's it.
Oh, and 4th of July is coming up. If you're in the parade, be there early.
What was July 18? Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. I have two things. I'd like to make a referral to the city manager to prepare a report for AP&amp;W to have a discussion on considering Evanston residency preference in our hiring, or even Evanston residency requirements for hiring and positions. Also, a referral to AP&amp;W as well, for us to examine the city of Evanston's Exeter-Fender hiring policy.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. All right. Alderman Wilson, would you like to do the preamble to lead us into executive session?
Thank you. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, real estate, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. Exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C11, and C21.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.